I'm Beck Thomas, Mayor of Glenocke and Chairperson of this afternoon's council meeting. Glenocke City Council acknowledges the Palaua people as being an Aboriginal community as the original owners and continuing custodians of this land on which we meet, this island, Lutawitah, Tasmania. Palaua have a distinctive and age-old connection with their ancestral lands and waters, and we respect and recognise the Palaua's survival and continual connection with their country spanning more than 60,000 years. Joining me here in council chambers this afternoon is Deputy Mayor Su Hiki, Alderman Jan Dunsby, councillor Molly Kendall, councillor Harry Quick, Alderman Russell Yaxley, Alderman Josh Cockshut, Alderman Stuart Slade, and Alderman Stephen King, and Acting General Manager Emilio Rialy, as well as a number of council staff this afternoon, and a number of community members. Welcome to community members joining us here in chambers, and welcome to community members who might be joining us online this afternoon. Before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace health and safety. Glenocke City Council takes workplace health and safety seriously, and this includes physical and psychological safety. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers, and members of the public who are present at council meetings. Council meetings form part of council's workplace, and it's expected that everyone who attends council meetings behaves in a polite and respectful manner. Council has endorsed a statement of intent, setting out how we as elected members have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenocke. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering that both during debate and in decision-making, we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenocke and make our city the best it can be. Finally, I note that the open section of this meeting is being livestreamed, and audio and audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. Members of the public are not permitted to make audiovisual recordings of council meetings, but should be aware that if they do speak at this afternoon's council meeting, it is being livestreamed. We have 15 items on our agenda this afternoon. And Agenda Item 1 is apologies. We have apologies this afternoon from Alderman Kelly Sims. Item 2 is confirmation of minutes of the open meeting. Do I have someone to move a motion, the minutes of the council meeting held on 27th of March 23 being confirmed? Move Alderman Slade, someone to second, Alderman King. Any discussion of the minutes, Alderman Slade?
No, they're sitting here to be record banned up further.
Thank you, Alderman Slade. Any discussion?
Just a slight correction. There's a couple of times where it was mentioned that it noted just Alderman, and it probably should be noted as elected members or councillors. I can let you know where I found those references.
Yeah, no, we're happy to review the minutes and adjust them. Are you happy with that as the mover, Alderman Slade?
I'm happy with that.
Happy with that? Thank you, we will note that. Thank you, Alderman Yaxley. Any further discussion? Nothing to close debate, but have you put the motion, Alderman Slade?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, I'll put the motion. Please raise your hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Item 3 is announcements by the Chair. I have none today. Item 4 is pecuniary interest notification. Do any elected members or staff have any pecuniary interests to note about any today's gender items? None? Item 5 is response to previous public questions taken on notice, and there are none in our agenda today. Item 6 is public question time. So the council meeting is a formal meeting of the elected members, elected by the Glenocke community, chaired by myself. Public question time is an opportunity in this formal meeting for members of the public to ask questions of your elected council representative about the matters that affect ratepayers and citizens. Question time is for asking questions, not making statements, but brief explanations of the background to questions may be given for context. Comments or statements about council's activities are otherwise not permitted. I may commit follow-up questions at my discretion, however, answers to questions are not to be debated with the council. I may refuse to answer a question, or I may direct someone to stop talking if I decide that the question is not appropriate or not in accordance with these rules. We have 15 minutes of public question time, but I do have the discretion to extend public question time if necessary. We have received a number of questions on notice this afternoon that we didn't receive in time to publish in the agenda, so I will note those questions. One is from Mr John Pritchard of Clermont, who refers to correspondence received in relation to the development application and development permit for the old Clermont Primary School site. He, Mr Pritchard, has a brief explanation in his words, says, "No one else in the vicinity..." Sorry, please find below a copy of a letter sent to our neighbour at the old St Albans Church, Main Road Clermont. "No one else in the vicinity of the old primary school site received this or any other notification of any amendment." What makes this important is the fact that an extension to the two-year building start date has been hidden in these planning amendments, something that would have allowed residents the opportunity to further express their concerns as to the structure, height, plus parking and traffic concerns. Since the original approval, it should be noted that council, in their wisdom, declared Cabri Road the main access route for B double trucks, adding further concern for parking on this road, as contained in the original approval, as well as creating further parking for the units in the only parking area available for visitors to the Windermere Reserve. This problem should have been witnessed by the mayor yesterday, 25th of the 4th, 23, when the ANZAC ceremony caused vehicles to be parked in Cabri Road, nearly causing an accident when several of these huge trucks ventured between parked vehicles. What I am expressly asking is that you use today's meeting to ask for this amendment to be revisited, with the view of giving residents the opportunity to be involved prior to any extension of the building's start date being granted. Signed, John and Peter Pritchard." General Manager, would we like to take that question on notice, Acting General Manager, or do we have a planning?
We take that on notice, Mayor, but we could provide probably a brief explanation as to the nature of, well, one, the amendment, because just for everyone's benefit, only people who have made representation or are joining the company owners would have been sent to notice. That's the reason not everyone in the area is sent to notice. A traffic impact assessment would have accompanied that application, so all of those items would have been assessed. And I would ask our planning manager development, if there's anything else he'd like to add, I'm not sure if you can project your voice from up there, Paul, but is there any other items we could probably...
Essentially, Mr Pritchard is asking about, it appears that there has been an extension granted to the time for the development of the old primary school, Clermont Primary School site, and he's asking that we have the amendment, he's calling it an amendment to the application, the amendment to be revisited with the view of giving residents the opportunity to be involved prior to any extension of the building's start date being granted. So I guess if you have any clarification on any amendment that's been granted, but you may need to come down, sorry, Paul, because I don't think your voice will be picked up on the microphone. Thank you. I have Paul Gandhi, who has our manager development.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Just to confirm that, an extension of time was granted on the permit on the 23rd of February. This is for a further two-year period. This is something that's allowed under the scheme, and it just takes into account that the developer's not able to start the development for various reasons. That's a fairly normal thing to happen. It's not normal, and we're not required to actually notify representatives of that. Separately, we did have a request to amend the permit. Originally, the permit involved a stage where there would be demolitions of some of the existing buildings, and it also required at that point the refurbishment of the original schoolhouse. The amendment was basically just to separate those two, so the demolition can occur prior to the refurbishment of the schoolhouse, but we did condition up that amended permit, that we require the refurbishment to commence within 12 months of the demolition. Now, on this occasion, that we are required to notify representatives to the original application, and we did, and that's why they received that letter. So it's really just a change in the staging of the application.
Sure. Thank you very much. So no change to the actual permit, the development that's proposed under the permit at this stage, rather change to...
Just the timing of it.
The staging to see the buildings demolished prior to the refurbishment of the schoolhouse, but still that that needs to be done within 12 months.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Anything further, Acting General Manager?
No, that's all. Thanks, Bea. I pay to stay for the next questions.
Thank you. Yes. So we have then received a number of questions from members of the public in relation to proposed development of 8 to 10 Main Road in Clermont. One from Mr David Kirke, who is here with us today. Mr Kirke's question 1 is, "Main Road Clermont is a block of land over 10 metres in width that includes public parking spaces, utilised by the Country Music Club. Has heritage issues subject to a Part 5 agreement pursuant to the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act dated 17th of the 4th, 1997? This is a perpetual agreement between council and owners of Clermont House and has Crown Land status being on the same title as Lady Clark Avenue. Is council now actively considering the sale or disposal of that Crown Land and with whom?" And question 2, "Why has council not rejected access across 12 Main Road onto Lady Clark Avenue from 8 to 10 Main Road, when that particular site has more than sufficient road access onto Main Road for a development commensurate within a residential zoning?" I don't know, do you want to take this separately, or...
Mayor, I could possibly answer that. We are aware of the conservation management plan that sits on Clermont House, on that property. This strip of land is adjacent to the land 8 to 10 Main Road Clermont. Council is not considering sale or disposal of this land. However, council is obliged, when we receive an application, to consider an application to allow or licence a use of the land for whatever the purpose may be, without giving due consideration to the development. In other words, we have to be development-blind when we receive an application to put a, or in this case, a crossover over that land. So we would not be selling it. It would be either a non-exclusive licence or a permit to actually put a driveway crossover on the land, similar to how driveways are set up for private residents over nature strips. But in doing so, we look at that separate to the development. So we have to still make an assessment of that application. So that's the reason why we have to do this, and we can't just outright reject it.
Thank you, Acting General Manager. Does that answer your question, Mr Kirke?
Yes, no, thank you. The other question, I think you'll be able to answer that. Question 2.
Question 2. "Why has council not rejected access across 12 Main Road onto Lady Clark Avenue from 8 to 10 Main Road, when that particular site has more than sufficient road access onto Main Road for a development commensurate within a residential zoning?"
Through you, Mayor, because we've received an application to consider, so we actually have to consider that application. So we have to look at the merits of either accepting or rejecting that application. What we do assess, just to give you a little more detail, is, is it safe to provide access? Is there infrastructure that might be impacted by providing access? Does council need that land for any other purpose? Things like that get brought into the assessment.
There are a whole raft of issues here, I can see, not only Part 5 agreement, but also Lady Clark Avenue. It's only, it's between a five metre wide, maybe six at in places. You know, there are lots of issues here, so... And our concern is that, obviously, the application on number 8 to 10 Main Road, this has come up at the same time, so it's just sort of clouding the issue a bit, but there are a lot of issues here. So I mean, we, as residents, we're very keen to monitor this very closely.
Through you, Mayor, we totally understand, but we will take those issues into account in the assessment process.
And will we have any access to decision-making process, or will we be involved in that process at all?
So that sort of information could be a request for information if necessary. But yeah, let's see how the process goes.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. One part of the question hasn't been answered, though. Who has made the application? I mean, do we know, can we know who has made it? Is it McDonald's, or is it the owner of the land?
My, through you, Mayor, my understanding is the owner of the land or their consultant representatives.
Planner.
Yep.
Planner.
Yes, a planning consultant who's acting as an agent for the owner of the land.
Owners. Right.
Which is standard in development applications.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another question on notice from Ron College of Clermont. "Why does this council make rules and bylaws it has no intention of fulfilling? This council passed zoning laws to make the land at 8 to 10 Main Road Clermont inner residential from commercial, making any commercial operation such as 24-hour drive-through prohibited on this site. So why does this council now ignore their own recommendations instead of upholding the planning scheme by rejecting outright any application that does not comply with the rules of inner residential zoning as applicable to this block of land?"
Through you, Mayor, I might start and then hand over, but we are aware that land is zoned in a residential, and the application for a 24-hour drive-through is actually a prohibited use of that land. However, it doesn't prevent people from applying for a rezoning. So that is something that applicants can do in any situation. And then, once that application is received, we have to go through a process of making assessment to how appropriate it is, whether a rezoning could be considered. I might hand over to our planning officers, anything else to add, or is that...
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly, through you, Chair. So the assessment has to occur, and we have to make an assessment so that it's part of a, like, an open and transparent process, so that, you know, the applicant and any interested party can see how it's been assessed and then how a decision has actually been made.
The state government legislation sets out how we are to receive and assess development applications and requests to council to initiate amendments to the planning scheme. So we are bound to follow the due process that legislation sets out and give any applicant a fair process, due process, in assessing an application, and then the officers recommend to the Glenocke Planning Authority whether to reject or accept a particular application. So that's the process, just to be clear, and we're not at that stage yet. Officers have received an application, it has not come to the Glenocke Planning Authority yet.
And through you, Mayor, if it's any further coming, it goes through another process. So if council actually accept to prepare, still wording, prepare for a zone amendment, it then has to go to the Tasmanian Planning Commission, who has the actual final say, and that's an independent state body, so not associated with council, goes to another body to review and make their assessment as to whether it should be, you know, accepted or not. So it does go through a two-stage process. And then, sorry, Mayor, just in addition, then the development itself gets assessed. So it's another process that will then come back before the Glenocke Planning Authority to make a determination on.
And community members will have the opportunity to make representations through both of those processes, assessment of any development application and consideration of any proposed planning scheme amendment, but we're not at that point yet. So all the representations that are being sent in, we're not in a position yet, we can note them, but we're not in the position to formally consider them, and they won't count as representations until such time as an application's formally advertised. So you'll need to send them all in again. Paul, did you have something to add?
Yeah, sorry, just through you, Chair, just to clarify. So looking at a planning scheme amendment process, it's quite different from a pure step, straightforward development application process. So a report and a recommendation needs to go to the GPA, Glenocke Planning Authority, and if they decide to prepare the amendment, then it goes on public exhibition.
Yes.
If they decide not to prepare the amendment, then it doesn't go on public exhibition. So that's just...
Thank you for clarifying, because if it will, a recommendation will come to the Glenocke Planning Authority on the requested amendment, without community members being able to have their say on that, because it's not unless we decide to initiate an amendment that it goes on public exhibition. So just to be clear on that, because that might seem like an anomaly, but that's the process for planning scheme amendments.
And through you, Chair, just a further point of clarification. So the request that we have before us at the moment is basically combining the planning scheme amendment request with the development application, so they'll potentially travel through the process together. So if the planning authority decides to prepare the amendment, it then turns its mind to whether it's appropriate to, I guess, in principle, like, test the planning permit application?
Yeah.
And if they agree to both, it all goes on exhibition, so the community would have that opportunity to put forward their representations on both at that same time, it goes through that process.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you, Lindal. Lindal is our Senior Strategic Planner. And Mr Colleagues, would you like to...
It's fine, the mayor's right. The mayor's going to answer my question.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent. Thank you. Moving on then to, and we are, I will extend public question time, because we have reached our 15 minutes, so I'll extend it for another 15 minutes at 3:54pm. I have another question on notice from Mr Paul Campton. "In the Greater Glenocke Plan 2021, with regards to Clermont, it states, 'Under Principle 1, a local place for local people.' The plan focuses on delivering a local centre that is high-quality social connector with good accessibility, connectivity and safety, rather than identifying significant new retail or commercial development opportunities. Further medium-density residential development within walking distance to the active centre, like at the former primary school site, will enhance the vibrancy of the centre. Given the Greater Glenocke Plan principle for Clermont CBD and the current inner residential zoning for 8 to 10 Main Road and the former Clermont Primary School site, does council still prioritise housing for these residential sites in the current housing crisis, or is commercial use now the focus for such inner residential sites?" My answer would be that council does absolutely prioritise housing. We are undertaking a number of actions across our municipality to make sure we are maximising the use of land for residential housing purposes, but we are also open for business and have a duty under the legislation set out by the state government in relation to land use planning, to assess any request for amendment to the planning scheme and development applications in accordance with that legislation. Anything further to add to that answer?
No, that's pretty much council.
Mr Campton.
Paul Campton, Main Road Clermont. Just a second question, if I could, Mayor, please.
Yeah.
"Council, as is aware, has an obligation to ensure that a planning scheme amendment meets Schedule 1 objectives of LUPA, where it states, 'require sound strategic planning and coordinated action by state and local government.' Question is, does council consider that it would be meeting its obligations under LUPA when land that has been strategically zoned as inner residential should now be available for prohibited uses, I won't mention 24-hour drive-throughs?"
Thank you, Mr Campton. Council takes advice from planning officers and considers all development applications based on their merits against the criteria of the planning scheme. So we take that responsibility very seriously, and our obligation under LUPA and any other planning legislation very seriously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further questions from members of the public who are in the gallery this afternoon? Ms Bryant? Just come forward, so Paul might just pop up. Swap spots. Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
There is question here. "If you rezone and dispose of CBD car parks, will this council's plan to provide accessible car parking for the people of Glenocke to carry on their daily lives?"
Might need to take that one on notice. Thank you, Ms Bryant. I'm not sure of any specific rezoning you are referring to there?
The number 22 amendment, or the rezoning that's listed.
Are you referring to the new specific area plans, or the amendments to the specific area plans for the Principal Activity Centre?
That's it.
Yeah, and so you're proposing to rezone and dispose of CBD car parks? Can you just repeat the end of your question, sorry?
"What is council's plan to provide accessible car parking for the people of Glenocke to carry on their daily lives?"
Thank you, Ms Bryant. We'll take that one on notice.
I've got the questions written out for you.
Great, thank you.
"Will the council be providing the infrastructure for the Northern Corridor apartment developments?"
When you talk about infrastructure, what specific infrastructure are you referring to?
Underground services.
Acting General Manager, do you want to take that one on notice as well?
So we are actually looking at doing some studies on what infrastructure is available and its capacity. If there is need to upgrade the infrastructure, that would probably be a condition of development applications as they arise, but it depends on what sort of applications we get. There might be other ways that they can detain stormwater, for instance, and not, you know, have a zero net impact on the infrastructure. So they're the sorts of things that we would look for and assess. So we would make sure that the systems are not overloaded in any development that takes place.
My major concern is the cost to ratepayers. So you can bear that in mind when you answer the question. All right, thank you.
Through you, Mayor, that's exactly our concern too. So we are looking at ways of minimising any impact, and that's why we try and condition...
It should be known for ratepayers, honestly. These are property developers making a lot of money out of these apartments, and we should not be footing the bill.
Thank you, Ms Bryant.
Okay. The next one is, "Could you provide transparency to the community in relation to the land tenure of Berarau Public Reserve? Has the Berarau Public Reserve been disposed of?"
Thank you, Ms Bryant. The Berarau Public Reserve obviously has a number of different titles on it, so I'm not sure if you're referring to a specific title on the Berarau Public Reserve?
I did put in a right to information request, and there are leases, the land is being occupied, and how is it legally occupied if there's no lease agreement for those portions of the Berarau Public Reserve?
My understanding is we do have lease agreements, Acting General Manager?
Through you, Mayor, we have a lease agreement on a car park that's been used by Mona. We have a potential further lease, it's actually a stage one for where the BMX track is, once the BMX track is relocated. So they are under formal lease agreements. We have a temporary lease, or a fixed-term lease, in an area near the, adjacent to the border where there used to be some caravan parking some time ago. That's for use for staff. We have a, just a, an agreement by a letter for their building, the builders to park their cars whilst some building works going on on the Mona site at the moment, within the old caravan park area, which may be the area you're referring to.
I am referring to that, and also the Berarau Fort Shore Reserve, which is the area north of the car park that Mona acquired initially. So there's quite a big area there that they're occupying, but I did not receive any information on any leases for that part of the peninsula.
Mayor, I want to ask our acting director to answer that one.
Acting Director, I hope so.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I think the area you're referring to, use my Mona under a licence, I believe would be in contact via email and sent you those licences as part of...
No, they're off the map. They finished in 2017.
Yeah, so there's provisions within those licences, they're just called holdover provisions. So the same terms and conditions apply in holdover. We are actually negotiating with Mona over a new lease over that area, the Worm Chapel, I think is the area you're referring to. Yes, so it will be a new agreement coming, but it's, the agreement isn't invalidated, it's... It says on what's called holdover provision, which is a clause which you'll find in that licence.
No, it's not, it's not in that licence, so check it. Anyway.
We can provide us with a bit more, so you take that on notice. Provide us with a bit more of the market, through you, Ms. Bryant?
Yes, thank you. Now, the other question relates to Agenda item 10 today. Why have the strategic plan objectives been deleted from the leasing and licensing policy? Making lives better has been replaced with open for business. Now, I hear today that about Toil, Main Road Clermont and a licensing request for that land. And here we have a change to the licensing policy that says open for business. So the welfare of ratepayers and residents seems to have been made irrelevant. You have removed community consultation, community goals, deploying council's resources effectively to deliver value, accountability, reference to regulatory compliance in council systems and processes. Also been prior consultation with elected alderman on these changes? If they're voting to approve this today, has there been prior consultation with elected alderman?
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. My understanding is the strategic plan references have been removed because we now have a new strategic plan. So if we were going to include strategic plan references at all, it would need to be updated to include our current strategic plan references, of which we do have goals and objectives, some of which remain, including making lives better remains as an objective in our new strategic plan. But I'm hazarding a guess and I would defer to perhaps the Director of Corporate Services through you, Acting General Manager, to clarify that maybe it's because it's not necessarily, not necessary to have strategic plan references in what are policy documents. They are separate things.
I understand that. But the concern is, the actions and the words seem to coincide. You know, open for business, the community irrelevant, basically. The making the lives better, you know, if you're disposing of the CBD car parks, what's that, how's that making lives better?
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. I think you're making a statement now that.
I am, I am.
So it's question time. So I think I'll just defer to the director to answer your question about the strategic plan references or Acting General Manager.
Yep, through you, Mayor. The policies had a number of headings where we refer to legislative requirements or any other documents and also had a reference to the strategic plan, how it might align to them. We recently went through a new strategic planning process. We come up with new strategies which made the ones that were on the existing policies obsolete. So a decision was made to actually remove the section where it referred to strategic plans on council policies. Because it's not a common thing to have strategic plan references in policy documents. The policy does have some reference to legislative processes and then lays out a process that we need to follow in running out our duties. So the strategic plan references were not really there for any other reason except for showing where they might align.
They should guide the city making.
It's not an opportunity for debate, Ms. Bryant. Thank you, do you have any further questions?
All right. With allowing a letter specifying a permit is not required in lieu of issuing a valid planning permit, there are many issues not addressed in the policy. Who has the delegation to issue these letters? How are they assessed? How and who manages conflicts of interest and risk? Does this meet statutory requirements under the legislation? And I'll just continue on because you'll probably take this on notice or the elected aldermen are listening. So if they have to vote this evening on the approval of this policy, that's up to them. With previous changes to the planning authority delegations, is there a conflict of interest register? And how is this managed? Is risk management assessed? Okay.
Through you, Mayor, I can answer that if you like.
Which policy? Sorry, just quickly, which policy are you referring to?
I'm talking about the changes to the planning authority delegations that went through some time ago. How is conflict of interest and risk management looked after?
Through you, Mayor, we do have a conflict of interest register. So conflicts of interest are recorded and registered. The delegations, depending on the development, of course, are allocated to planning officer, planning statutory planning, senior statutory planning officer, manager, director, general manager. So if it's a no permit required, it still goes through an assessment process to determine that there's no permit required. Because if something meets all of the planning requirements, like the required setbacks, heights and everything else that it needs to comply with, then the applicant doesn't actually need to have a permit. They're actually able to.
Yeah. So that's not clear in the policy, that's all I'm saying.
The planning scheme actually does spell it out. In fact, the applicant doesn't even have to come to council to get that. We recommend they do because that way it's verified and they have a letter from us to say it's actually been assessed and it doesn't need a permit. But the planning scheme actually does lay out the process.
It's just not mentioned in the policy, that's all. You know, for the communities, you know, help. Okay, so if officers are doing planning approvals outside the planning authority authorising them, that conflict of interest register, is that a separate one to the one that's used for the elected alderman?
Do you start having a conflict of interest register?
Through you, Mayor. There is only one conflict of interest register. So I believe it all goes onto the same register.
Okay. I'll need to have a look at that. Okay, then. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Thank you. Any further public questions? From members of the public in the gallery this afternoon? Nothing further? Okay. Thank you. We will move on then to item seven, which is petitions or addressing a council meeting through a deputation. And has General Manager, Acting General Manager received a petition this afternoon?
A deputation.
A deputation, sorry. A deputation. And I, as chairperson of the council, have accepted a request for Ms. Pauline Elliott and Mr. David Kirkie to address the council meeting on the topic of the proposed development of eight to 10 Main Road Clermont, including one, two access selling disposal of council land, three, information for safety concerns, especially residence of Lady Clark Retirement Village and loss of amenity for residents, and five, desired outcome retention of eight to 10 Main Road for housing. So Ms. Elliott and Mr. Kirkie, welcome to join me. And you have 15 minutes in which to address the council.
I won't be that long. So I'm Pauline Elliott and I live in Main Road in Clermont. And I'm speaking on the proposed development at eight to 10 Main Road Clermont. So council has received a development application in relation to eight to 10 Main Road Clermont. This proposal seeks to locate a 24-hour drive-through facility in the midst of residential properties. There are residences on all four sides of the property. The land is currently zoned in a residential and as such, a 24-hour drive-through is prohibited. Residents near this property are dismayed at the prospect of loss of amenity with constant noise, light, odor and traffic which will accompany such a development. The zoning and planning is not ambiguous and this proposal should have never been encouraged. Council planning members have contacted various residents to also inform them of an application to access, sell or dispose of council land, presumably to the developers or to the owners of eight to 10 Main Road Clermont, which we've just found out. This is to enable an access point to the property from Lady Clark Avenue. The property, eight to 10 Main Road, has sufficient and generous access to Main Road for any allowable use commensurate with its inner residential zoning. Increased access can only mean a large volume of traffic is expected on the site and the inappropriateness of directing it into a small side road less than six metres in width, leading to a retirement village is obvious. If this apparent land grab by the owners or developers is approved, it can only be interpreted as tacit council approval for the whole prohibited development. This land grab, we are informed, is considered separately from the development application. Yet it is self-evident that extra access is due to the traffic demands of the 24-hour drive-through and thus it cannot be seen in isolation and it's naive to pretend otherwise. If it is indeed seen independently, then there's no justifiable reason for allowing extra access to council land within the current zoning. The issue of the information given to residents by council when purchasing properties in the area over the last two years needs to be considered. Prospective residents pursued due diligence and found they were bordering on an inner residential zone and purchased their properties on this basis. Now they face the prospect of the properties being worth less than their mortgages and all the stress and expense that will bring through no fault of their own. The integrity of that information provided by the council, the planning scheme and the Greater Glenorkie Plan will be degraded if this current development application is approved. Currently, there are approximately 100 residents who are living in the Lady Clark Retirement Village. These residents are extremely concerned about the proposed development. Primarily, their safety and loss of amenity are their main concerns. If traffic is directed into Lady Clark Avenue, a very narrow road leading only to residential housing, it will be distressing and dangerous for locals to use. Also, the road is a dead end and more traffic from this development could be expected to use the roads around the Lady Clark Retirement Village to turn around. The other documented concern for these residents is the increase in antisocial behaviour by those using the Lady Clark Retirement Village as a shortcut from Boxhill Road to the proposed development. This has been a problem in the past, which, after much effort, has been controlled. Elderly residents and management reasonably foresee and are distraught with such behaviour recurring. And the unreasonable loss of amenity as pedestrians illegally use the Lady Clark Retirement Village as a natural shortcut to the proposed 24-hour development. When this property was first zoned in a residential, I sought information from the then mayor. She informed me that the council planning officers had identified the property as underutilised and suitable for housing. The current mayor has featured in the media over the last few months promoting her commitment to housing and bemoaning the lack of suitable housing land. We commend her statements on the need for more housing. One might reasonably consider the planning scheme, the Greater Glenorkie Plan, the statement on commitment to housing and numerous public recent statements by council to be rendered worthless if land set aside for housing development can be given to a commercial development which could be located in a more appropriate non-residential site. The outcome which I and all residents close to the proposed development seek is to keep this land available for housing and refuse to amend the planning scheme to allow a 24-hour drive-through. The developers have indicated that they will seek another site in Clermont if this one is unavailable. This option allows the council to demonstrate its integrity by upholding its zoning and planning schemes whilst still supporting commercial developments and jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Mr. Kirkie, would you like to address as part of the deputation?
No, I think that pretty much covers it all. Obviously, residents are very concerned about the prospect and we've been comforted a bit, I guess. You know, Donalds have said they'll look elsewhere if council do the right thing. So we're really looking forward to getting good results. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkie. Thank you. Just in response to the deputation, we'll say that we, as a council, understand the sensitivity of this development application and will be assessing the application in line with the planning scheme and the landowner consent process, two separate processes. I can reiterate that the proposed drive-through development is a prohibited use in an inner residential zone. But nevertheless, the applicant, as does anybody, has the right to request a planning scheme amendment which has a defined process for assessment. Council officers are currently undertaking this assessment process. It would be entirely inappropriate for council or any elected member to make any comment or predetermine the outcomes of the assessment as council is legally required to keep an open mind on all development applications and requests for planning scheme amendments. Once the assessment has been made, council officers will present a recommendation to the Glenorkie Planning Authority for consideration and decision. Should the authority decide to initiate a planning scheme amendment, the final decision on any amendment will rest with the Tasmanian Planning Commission. As you're aware, there will be further opportunity for formal representations during the statutory processes of both the planning scheme amendment request and the development application. And we will anticipate formal representations from members of the community when that time comes. As I mentioned earlier, representations that have been made to date cannot count towards any formal process. So it is important, should a public opportunity become available through the assessment process or when that time comes, that you do make a formal representation if you want your voice to be heard. It's through this formal representation process that council is able to give full and due consideration to community feedback. I'm not able to provide any further comment, information or potential outcomes until the assessment is undertaken by officers and recommendations are presented to the Glenorkie Planning Authority. I reiterate that at this stage, there is no application before the Glenorkie Planning Authority and no decision on any scheme amendments or initiating any scheme amendments or development applications has been made. In response to a couple of the specific points, Ms. Elliott, that you raised, the proposal, I can say, was never encouraged. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's not something that council actively sought out. There is no proposal for council to dispose of any land in relation to this development application or there's no request to purchase land. As was pointed out earlier this afternoon, you know, in some instances, council provides non-exclusive licence agreements over certain parcels of land. But at this point, we are not proposing to dispose of land. There is no request to purchase land. And GM consent to use council-owned land is an entirely separate matter from any development application assessment. GM consent does not indicate approval. They are separate assessment processes. One, where the GM considers approving or providing consent for use of land for a particular purpose. Two, where the Glenorkie Planning Authority considers development application and a request to initiate an amendment to the planning scheme. Council has and remains committed to being as open and transparent with community members and as responsive to community members as possible throughout this entire process. And we hope that you can see that that is the case. We will continue to communicate in line with the due process. Thank you for your deputation. Moving on to item eight. Anything further, Acting General Manager? Before we do that?
Just going to mention if people would like to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Oh, yes, thank you.
For a particular.
Yes. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are most welcome. Acting General Manager should remind me to let you know, but you are not obliged to. So it's up to you. Item eight is activities of the mayor. We have a recommendation that council receive the report about the activities of Mayor Thomas during the period from Monday 20th of March to Sunday 16th of April. Do I have someone to move this as a motion? Moved Alderman Dunsby, someone to second, Alderman Cockshaw, Alderman Dunsby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'd like to just stand your meeting on the 22nd of March with Nigel Clutterback from the Scouts Tasmania.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Clutterback had requested to meet with myself and Marina Campbell, manager of community, also join that meeting to talk about some of the activities of scouts in and around Glenorkie. They would like council's help in promoting the opportunities that scouts offer here in our municipality, out at, in Glenorkie itself and out at Austen Ferry. They have a scout hall at Shubert Park, as well as one here in Glenorkie. So that was really about that.
Thank you. Andrew Moore from Moore Consulting.
Andrew Moore has been undertaking a bit of consultancy work initially for the Glenorkie Football Club, but also linking up with the YMCA and Glenorkie Cricket Club, trying to get some of the users around the KG5 precinct to connect it up in working together on, as a precinct. precinct. So I met with Andrew Moore to talk about that.
You're meeting with Peter Shedy from the Glenorkie Rugby Club and Andrew Wilkie.
Oh, yes. So that was in response to a letter that Mr Wilkie had sent on behalf of the Glenorkie Rugby Club, who were asking council about the transition to the new club rooms at Edie Street. And there had been some historical discussion, it's dating back about 13 years, I think, when the first conversations were had about new club rooms at Edie Street. I think Alderman King may have been involved back then, about compensation, I guess, if you like, for the rugby club who felt they had invested a lot in that old facility and how some of the members still had concern as to whether they had been adequately compensated through the process of moving into the new club room. So it was really to discuss some of those concerns and reassure the rugby club. And we did follow up with a letter to Mr Shedy and the rugby club, seeing Mr Wilkie in, to confirm that most certainly council had invested over $100,000 in the new facility and we saw that as fitting compensation for the investment that the club had made in the old facility. And certainly, we had factored the investment the club had made in years gone by into the lease agreement as well.
Just, if I could, Mayor, on that subject, if I, in a round of seconds, there was never, ever, ever any suggestion of compensation in any of the meetings we ever had with rugby and soccer and all the rest, it was all about a new facility.
That's okay. I think we've cleared it up now, so hopefully we're okay.
Thank you. And also, your meeting with Earl Stewart in relation to what's at point.
Oh, yes. Mr Stewart had wanted to meet with council to talk about opportunities for further development of the infrastructure around the Whitesnose Point area in the future. He's got some development proposals and concepts that he wanted to discuss with council. So it was really just to brief us on some of those ideas.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dunspie, any further discussion? Questions? Go back to the mover. Nothing, I'll close debate. Right hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Moving on to item nine, dangerous dog registration fee. We have a recommendation that council rescind council decision 20 June 2022 to increase the dangerous dog class registration to $1,000 commencing 23/24 financial year. Approve the registration fee for the declared dangerous dog class for initial registration from the start of the 23/24 financial year at $500 and approve the registration fee for declared dangerous dog class of $200 for the second subsequent years of registration from the start of 23/24 financial year. Do I have someone to move this as a motion? Councillor Quick, someone to second, Alderman King. Councillor Quick, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. It really worries me that we have any dangerous dogs in our community. I mean, constantly in the media, we hear of young people or even adults attacked by dogs. Eight is eight too many. It really worries me. I know the owners say that they're going to be put in a financial disadvantage if we continue with the $1,000 fee. I can understand that. I know there are, well, I'd like to believe that they are responsible dog owners and, as it says in the details, that the dogs are muzzled, they have an appropriate run and the like. But in order to ensure that we don't have any more than eight, I'd like to see the recommendation amended to, in any future registration of dangerous dogs, that we implement the $1,000 rather than the $500 in order to discourage people. I mean, there are plenty of dogs in the dogs home that are available for adoption, but it really worries me that there are eight dangerous dogs in our municipality.
So, do you want to speak to the motion? I just need to check slightly procedurally. So, Councillor Quick, you now want to move an amendment rather than moving the motion that I originally read out? So I did ask for a second after that original amendment because I wasn't aware that you were trying to move an amendment. So just procedurally, Acting General Manager, is that acceptable to?
I'm hoping that Quick must move it.
Yep.
Yes, I believe you can actually move an amendment. You can request an amendment, but it would have to be voted on by members.
So even though you moved the original motion and I got a second up, procedurally?
It should come for another person.
We can, yeah. I think procedurally, Councillor Quick, because you moved the motion that I read rather than jumping in and saying I want to move an amended motion, perhaps the amendment needs to come from another elected member or is there a process to withdraw? Moving? I know it seems petty, but try and do things procedurally correctly.
It should come for another person.
Another elected member?
That is one way of addressing it, the secondary agrees. Or, I'm just checking. It can actually still move a member.
The mover?
Yes.
Bear with us, everyone.
How does the manager try first? David, because something should say so.
Yes, that's what we're looking at. So at a meeting, a councillor who did not move or second a motion may move a motion to amend the original motion. A councillor is not to move a motion to amend another motion while a previous motion to amend that other motion is before the meeting. Yes, you can only have one amendment. So yes, it would need to be another, sorry, Councillor Quick.
That's all right.
It would need to be somebody else who would need to move that as amendment, given we have open debate on that particular motion.
Deputy Mayor? Yes, maybe if I comment now, then that decision can be made by someone else. So for the benefit of those who weren't here last term, I fought very vigorously to get this to the point where it was at the figures that have been announced in the early part of this. I too agree there should be no dangerous dogs and I also think that it's an absolute risk and I wanted a disincentive for ownership of dangerous dogs. However, the officers have come back and said, well, what we're doing is punishing people who are trying to do the right thing, even if they are owning dangerous dogs. What will happen in reality is people with dangerous dogs who just say, I won't pay, they just will go underground. So we're not really controlling the behaviour of dangerous dogs. You find homeless people will have them and no means of paying or anything like that. So I am prepared to accept the changes that have been suggested by the officers reluctantly, but for good reason in that I would rather see people who are deeply attached to their animals, whether they be dangerous or otherwise, be able to keep them contained and be answerable to our officers should they knock on the door. What I would like is reassurance that our officers do regularly check on these dogs and then I'm prepared to accept this motion as it stands. But I do hear what you're saying, Councillor Quick, and certainly that's how I felt last year, it's how I feel now, and I would personally ban all dangerous dogs, but I don't have that power.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? Alderman King?
I concur with what Nikki said as far as, I don't know why we really had dangerous dogs in the first place, but it is what it is and I don't want them to go underground either, although I appreciate Councillor Quick's comments and basically would have agreed with him simply because I just wanted to turn them in whatever way, shape or form we want. At the same time, if it forces people underground because of the cost, I think we tried for a year, we can change it again if we have to. I don't want to be chopping and changing policies all the time, but we've got to see where this takes us and get regular reports back from our council staff on just what's going on with these dogs, the relationship that's there as far as council's concerned and our staff and what the position is for these dogs. All it's going to take is one attack by a dangerous dog and we'll be the worst in the world if we're not doing something about it. So having been a service technician who's met some of these dogs over the years, you know, I don't see any need for any dog that's of that mind.
Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? Alderman Slade?
Mayor, I've just got a question that the Deputy Mayor was alluding to. There's a number of provisions here and my question is, this is in relation to dangerous dogs here in the state of Tasmania, that should be undertaken and there are quite a number of them here, including signage, damage else. Does our area in, that's what we controlling area, are these all undertaken? There's got a few here. Are they all undertaken?
Mayor might ask our manager of dog compliance in your area, Robbie. If you can take a guidance.
Contact the guidance.
Yes, through you, Mayor. So, yeah, council officers will, before the dog is, well, when the dog is declared, will inspect the property to make sure all of those parameters are met and also do regular checkups to make sure that the dog is, does have a collar on, is muzzled, there's an enclosure there. Constantly checking.
I'd say that I'm happy, we have a pretty good staff, Mayor, but there is quite a big list here that's got to be done and I'm just wondering whether or not, can there be another check process over that? It's all, we're not, a report comes to council every six months or something, just like that, there's a number of points here.
Do you have a question?
Mayor, I guess that it's feasible to provide a report and update every six months. Yep, through you, Mayor. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other Alderman's thoughts?
No, it's just those points that I know are busy and whatever, but in particular there's eight, 10 or 12, whatever that, that's undertaken to what this list is here. Thank you.
While you're there, sorry, Alderman, while you're there, Robbie, can you just clarify, remind us, I know we talked about this last year, how you define a dangerous dog?
Sure. Through you, Mayor. A dangerous dog is a dog that has been declared as dangerous under the Dog Control Act 2000. So usually, after an incident, council officers delegated by the general manager will declare it, will can declare a dog as dangerous if the dog has caused serious injury to a person or an animal or there is reasonable cause to believe that that is likely to happen. Each incident, in each instance, is very much assessed on a case by case basis and there's a lot of investigation that goes into it. It's not something that we just declare out of whim. So we'll look into the dog's history, the actual incident in itself, how seriously injured it was, if there were any, what implications. At the end of the day, the community's safety is kind of what's assessed and that's what is at stake. So, yeah, council officers will make a decision based on the safety of the community.
So it's not a breed, it's actually something that's happened that's caused?
Well, it says here breed. So it is a breed there as well. So we've got a breed and we've got harmed by, it's recorded, it's got to have been recorded and proven.
Yes, so through you, Mayor, there's two, it's slightly different. There is a restricted breed declaration where there is a list of breeds that are declared as restricted breed. They're similar restrictions as a declared dangerous dog, but not quite as many. Notably, it's the enclosure, I believe, that they don't have to have the enclosure, that the dog doesn't have to be kept in the enclosure, but pretty much everything else, they have to tick all the other boxes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
You've got eight now.
Sorry.
Have we always had eight or have we, last year we had seven or six or five?
Through you, Mayor. Currently, we have eight. That has actually decreased recently. There are instances where residents can no longer keep control of a dangerous dog and we have to act on the community's best interests on that.
Sure. Thank you. Alderman Yaxley?
So just to clarify the recommendation, are we talking about Councillor Quick's?
Amendment? No, no, we are debating the motion that is as it is before us, yes.
Yeah, thank you. And, well, I've got the opportunity. I'll, just a couple of questions and a little comment. How many, I think you said regularly, there's checks? How many annual checks are there?
Through you, Mayor. Resource permitting, but a minimum of one check a year per dog.
One a year. Okay. And so the first, so in this situation, is the first year, well, there wouldn't be any more than one, there'd just be the one initial check and then each yearly after that?
Again, through you, Mayor. Yes, initially, there's a lot of investor, there's a lot of inspections initially because it does take a bit of a while to get the enclosure built and making sure everything is right. So there may be times when we're back and forth with them. And in the first six months, we tend to keep a very close eye on them. So that involves more than one inspection. But, yeah, the official inspections is usually, after that, is usually, you know, the minimum one a year.
Yep. And I guess as long as, for my, does the extra registration fee cover the cost for those extra inspections? Is that effectively why we've got that initial?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, that was initially, in our previous year, there wasn't actually a separate fee for dangerous dogs. They paid the same as a normal registered dog and that's where we believe that there should be a higher fee based on the increased resources that council actually uses for them. And therefore, yeah, that's the initial increase for the costs, bearing in mind that there are more inspections and more administrative work that needs to be done in the initial, during the initial declaration. That's why the $500 for the first year and then the $200 for subsequent years is recommended because it fairer reflects how hard resources are used.
Yeah, okay. I guess if I can make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
My concern is that probably one year for a dangerous dog probably isn't enough. I would, it's, I guess, an operational thing, but I think that it's probably something that we probably need to consider upping that a little bit in terms of just for such a, if they are declared as a dangerous dog. And perhaps that's something that we can consider in that sense. I think the priority is obviously on the safety of the community and I think as long as, if those, I guess, if they're checking off and the prescribed responsibilities are being fulfilled, I can appreciate that. But I guess my concern is that a year is a long time. So I guess my concern is around that. I understand that in terms of any further ones, we'll get that, but we're reducing the fee down to 200 for the continuation from 500. I just, and I appreciate that you don't want to have no dangerous dogs registered and but everyone knows that there's dangerous dogs out there, so I'd rather control. I appreciate that, but I'm just concerned that we're not probably having enough checks and balances in place, that's all.
If you have reason for concern further to Alderman Yaxley's comment, would you undertake further checks? Like if you had complaints or if you had been, a particular inspection gave you reason for concern, you would go back, you wouldn't wait 12 months, you'd go back again?
Through you, Mayor, that's absolutely correct. Yeah, yeah. If there's, if we receive any calls from the community, if we just, we're unsure of the owner's commitment to it, then, yeah, we would obviously inspect far more frequently. It's generally the ones that, who are doing the right thing and you can really, you can really tell that they're committed to it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you have anything further?
No, just nothing further. Thank you.
We've got hands up everywhere here, so Alderman Slade and Alderman Yaxley.
I'll speed it up, Mayor, I'll just, before I ask questions. I'll speak now, ma'am, I'll just, before I ask questions. We've got the wrong heading up here. Because we're talking about two different dogs. The act here is describing it as dangerous and restricted breeds, dogs Tasmanian. And they make it very clear of some similarities, but there's dangerous dogs and there's restricted dogs. So I think that should be reflective of what we're trying to enforce here. Dangerous dogs is the one which our good managers outlined that, you know, that maybe something came up and somebody dobbs them in and what's, fair enough, and they need controlling, whatever, and action's taken. The other one is these Doggo, Argentina, Filla, Brasilio, Japanese Toza, you know, where's the poor old, where's the poor old little, you know, little muzzle's gone? But American Pitbull, Terrier and all these sort of things, these ones here are restricted breed dogs and they're being banned because of the Customs Act. And so it's all the way through this documentation, they refer to it, ma'am, as the dangerous dog or a restricted breed dogs. I think we need to clarify and make sure that we hone it on both the titles.
Thank you, Alderman Slade. Do we have restricted dogs? Do we have a separate category for that?
Through you, ma'am. We currently have no restricted dogs in the municipality, but we can certainly consider that.
There they are. You can bind all these things out. Now, the old, as I said, the old sausage dog is a loser really. We've got these other things running around it and we should be looking long term strategically. If one arrives as an Alderman, elected member or a councillor, I want to know what we do if the old Japanese Toza turns up to look after that in the city.
Thank you. Would we, how would we treat that? Would we just register it as a normal dog if that was the case?
Currently, yeah, I would have to just, I might have to check that with my coordinator of compliance. But yeah, I believe so. It would be, it would be come under a regular registration.
Can we, yeah, can we have a, can we perhaps take that on notice? Because I agree it does require consideration and have a separate report back to council on that particular issue. So I agree it is important that we are comprehensive in this matter. Thank you, Alderman Slade. Alderman Cockshut.
Thank you, ma'am. My question is just in regards to having councils, have they got a similar sort of fee in terms of what they charge or are we a bit lower, higher, same or what's the market kind of like for this decision?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Yeah, it's, it's very different across all, all council that councils, they range. They range from $100 all the way up to, I think in some cases, $1,000, maybe even $1,500.
Yep. Yeah, okay. I just think like if we're saying here, a D sex dog fee is 44 bucks. We're only saying 200. There's not a big significant difference there really. So I think maybe it has to be a bit higher to kind of put on the back burner and not encourage us. But flip side, you do want people to have come forward to recognise them and declare them. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Cockshut. Did you have a question, Deputy Mayor?
Just a couple of quick questions. I'm interested that people can afford these enclosures. I'm assuming you're talking about a metal cage, yes, and then there's a fence line?
Yes, through you, ma'am. Yes, it's usually what you can imagine, the pens that, pretty much the pens that look like down at the dog's home. Something like that. Just has to be completely child safe.
So they can afford the setup and getting the dog, but not the registration? How many people are we talking about, about our eight owners, would have more than one dog?
Through you, ma'am. Not, of the current eight, they're all individuals.
It is a possibility going forward, a bit like the restricted dog. Yes. Also, I am interested that, this is a question, that other coun, how is it that other councils can charge up to $1,000 and $500 and we are out of step with that?
Through you, ma'am. A lot of other councils have initiated this similar model where as of a date, they've increased the fee to $1,000. Whereas all the dogs that were declared prior to that date would be at a different price, a different fee. And just to go back as well on your previous question on dangerous dogs, you are only permitted to have one dangerous dog per property.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Dunsky.
Thank you. The information we've just received in this discussion debate has been really interesting. For me, the council officers have understood the situation for us here in Ginnawki, the people who are owning the dogs, the responsibility that they're taking and the impact of the financial decision that we made and have brought this information back to us with an understanding of the people who are the consumers of this particular item. And I thank them for that, you know, it'd be easy to sit back and just leave it there and say, you know, it's causing people financial hardship. But I appreciate the understanding of from the council officers that bring this back to us. So I do thank them for that and based on that, I'll certainly be supporting it in its current context.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsky. Alderman, councillor Kendall.
Yeah, just to echo Jan's words there, to me, when I first saw this, the jump was huge and it almost seemed like an emotional decision in response to some incident. I wasn't quite sure the background. But yeah, I think we should think more about the behavioural impacts that it has in real life, you know, making decisions like this, which possibly is people just not registering or not complying and dangerous dogs being on loose in the area. So yeah, I support this and I thank the council management for bringing it to us.
Thank you. Pretty much everyone. I'll speak to the motion too and I appreciate the, how serious we're taking this matter. Obviously it is something that is important when it relates to community safety. I too support the recommendation before us. Ultimately, it is important that people are responsible dog owners, not only for dangerous dogs, but all dogs. Dog, being responsible dog owners is really important. And we as a council have a role to establish policy, procedure and fee structures to encourage and enable that. There are legislative requirements, as Alderman Slade has alluded to, in relation to dog ownership under the Dog Control Act. And we have a role as a council in ensuring community members meet those legislative obligations. Community safety is paramount in this matter and if dogs aren't registered, then we have no capacity to check them. So it is a matter of striking that balance between, you know, between affordability and regulation and also having some compassion, recognising that as we've heard, dogs are declared dangerous when they've caused serious injury to a person or an animal and it's a declaration made under the Dog Control Act. So we're not talking about people who have gone out and chosen to get a dangerous dog as a, as a pet for another sinister purpose. We are talking about people who for some reason, potentially out of their control, their dog has acted out and I'm not condoning that or saying that that's okay. It does need to be appropriately managed, but having some compassion that sometimes that's not always within people's control. So most importantly, as I say, community safety is at the forefront of our minds here. We do have a role in plan, it does come at a cost to council in undertaking the checks required to ensure that community safety in relation to registration of dangerous dogs. I think the information provided to us in the report and by Robbie tonight has demonstrated that this is a reasonable fee to charge for this particular service, if you like, or regulatory statutory requirement that we bear as a council. So I'm happy to support the recommendation. Any further discussion?
I've got a question, ma'am. When do we have a motion to cover restricted dogs?
When will we?
Yeah.
I think it's something that we'll perhaps first discuss at a workshop and then if a report needs to come to council, when can we have that though? Any timeline on that acting general manager?
Through you, ma'am. We've got a pretty full workshop agenda. So we'd probably need to look at when we could fit it in and it's something we could probably do this calendar year. As the manager has stated, there's not really any restricted dogs in Ginnawki. However, if we do become aware of one, we could certainly bring something to council pretty quickly.
Thank you. Now I'll go back to the mover, who was councillor Quick to post a vote.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank everybody for the discussion. It's been really, really important. Like Alderman Dunsky, I would like to compliment people who are tasked with making sure that this is being implemented on a regular basis. Whilst I don't necessarily agree with this, I'll go with it. But I'd like to see that when the brochure goes out with our rates, that this is mentioned somewhere because we get criticised for lack of transparency. And I'm not too sure whether the vast majority of rate payers realise that we have a dangerous dog policy and not the punishment, but you know, the implementation and the hardship of finding $500. So I think it'd be good somewhere in our brochure when it goes out with the rates to be mentioned. It might engender some discussion amongst the public and if there are any recalcitrant dog owners who do have dangerous dogs, we might be alerted to the fact that they're out there in the community. So once again, thank you for the discussion. I didn't realise it was going to take us so much to bear down, but you know, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Quick. I will put the motion to the vote. Please read and if you're for. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to item 10. Thank you, Robbie. Item 10, updated council policies. We have recommendation that council adopt the leasing and licensing of council owned and managed properties policy in attachment two and adopt the event management policy in attachment four. Do I have someone to move this as a motion? Remember, thank you, Alderman Dunsky. Seconded councillor Kendall. Alderman Dunsky.
Thank you. We have the forester report here that recommends that the policies are updated and we've got the relevant background into the reasoning for this. We also have the before and the after policies to see, to see where the track changes are. For me, I'm comfortable with what's been put before us and I'm happy to throw it open for debate.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsky. Further discussion? Alderman Yaxley.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, through you. Just, I think it's, there's a couple of little triggers around it that I'd like to, just to clarify, get some understanding of. I guess in the past, leases and licenses are a critical part for some revenue in terms of outside of rates. And so my concern was is around the five years, anything that was more than five years in terms of a lease in terms of that approval process. Can that be, go back through to a director or a general manager and not just the manager of that? Purely because I think five plus years is a long term lease or license. So perhaps that can be something that needs to be, just in terms of a safety.
Thank you, Alderman Yaxley. I think my understanding is that under the local government act, under section 178, it has, if it's greater than five years or more, it has to come to us as council to endorse anyway. So it's something perhaps to clarify acting general manager about why that is even mentioned in there, about the approval of the manager, if it's got to come through us anyway.
Because I, sorry, because my thinking was that it would be nice to come to us, but in terms of having, not being involved in operation, I just wanted to get that clarification. That was all, I guess.
Through you, ma'am. Five years is the longest we can go on a lease for any council land. Any longer than that, it becomes a land disposal process. And under section 178, we have to go through a process where we have to consult the community and advertise the intention and basically get approval from council. So anything under five years, all our previous policies have stated it can be approved by the manager of the property area.
So is that in terms of leasing of council property as well? So for instance, a hall or a facility that we own?
Yeah, I'd throw to.
Because it does say in here, terms exceeding five years must be approved by the manager of property environment and waste and will only be granted by exception and where in the best interest of the council. Lease terms exceeding five years, so is that referring to licenses then, can be approved by the manager?
No, so it's, it's, so through you, ma'am, it's trying to get at the fact that you need to get through the first gatekeeper to be the manager of property to even pursue that request to council. We don't want to tire all of council's resources taking requests for things that we just wouldn't want to consider to start with. So it's basically getting past the first gatekeeper to say, look, maybe that's a reasonable request. We'll bring it to council because they're allowing section 178 requests. Otherwise, every time they request it, it will come to council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, I understand.
And I'm sure if the manager doesn't approve it, they'll come potentially to a council anyway and saying, it's not fair. Can you consider it? Yes.
Thank you for alleviating my concerns.
Yes, good question. Anything further? Any other questions, Alderman Yaxley?
Uh, no, nothing. Good question.
Any further questions or discussion? I have a few. Yeah, you go councillor Kendall.
So just on the leasing one. Yeah, to provide some reassurance, I guess to Jan, to her point before about the timing of this coming and the removal of the strategic, strategic plan reference. If I can provide some reassurance in that I don't see a sinister motive here, although I could see why if you were looking at two things on the table, you could put that together. I think we had one last month that was in its current policy, I think, to remove the strategic plan as reference, which I think is current business practice in policies to remove those kind of aspirational comments and have those in other documents. So I guess that's a comment. And my question was around number 10 in the policy, which was why have we removed the provision for legal oversight?
So all occupancy arrangements, leases and licenses, so change all leases and licenses will be subject to formal written agreements reflecting appropriate legal and commercial standards. So we've taken out and reviewed by council's legal unit or external solicitors prior to finalising. So is that specifically asking why we've taken that wording out?
Through you, ma'am. Because it's covered in, will be subject to formal written agreements reflecting appropriate legal and commercial standards. So it implies that we've already been through a review process.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Look, that's largely correct. I mean, the templates are drafted and with the legal department's input. But every single agreement, like sometimes we have very simple agreements. So they're not necessarily sent to lawyers to review, say a license over a small garden event that's $110 a year. I guess we're just being honest that we, those sorts of agreements aren't sent to a lawyer to review, but some of the more significant bigger ones are, but certainly the template agreements that they're based on are based on legal.
So you're referring to best case legal practice in those?
In templates, absolutely.
Okay. So a follow up question, probably along those lines of being honest in policies. I was devastated at the tragic removal of the single use plastic commitment in the events. And I wondered what went wrong. I don't know. It'd be, we're far in this too.
So it's no longer, it's no longer a requirement, it's encouraged, which I was very disappointed to read too.
Sorry, not my policy.
Events policy, yes, that's right. So it was taken out of the events policy or well, it was amended.
Yeah.
No longer to say that that was a question I had too, but to say that it's no longer, it's not required, it's encouraged, single use plastics. And I guess, my guess was that the reasoning is that we don't have resources to police it, but nor do we have resources to police smoke free events, but we still require events to be smoke free. So I think if we don't, if we encourage it, it won't happen. If we require it, it's more likely to happen, despite the fact that we can't necessarily police it.
Sorry, through you, ma'am. I think it may be because it's not actually mandated, that we can't acquire it. We can only encourage it.
I do know another issue that can come up is if you ban single use plastics, that you're effectively made the composting packaging. And then so if you don't have composting facilities at the event, it becomes almost a negative because you're putting compostable materials into the rubbish and then that goes into landfill and breaks down into greenhouse gases. So in an ironic sense, that's probably better to be plastic because at least that doesn't break down into greenhouse gases and it's put away in landfill. So unless you're confident that you can have composting facilities or like photo collection services in events, it's perhaps a challenging requirement to make. It may not have the outcomes that you hope you're requiring if you don't have the photo facilities that you have.
Okay. Yeah, so my question was around how. Okay. Yeah. So my question was around how it got in there, I guess, and whether that was put in as a sort of way to enact some behavioural change that maybe didn't have the structural policy foundation under it. And is there a recommendation about how it could be gone about in another way that possibly I can help to make happen?
Can we take that on later?
Okay. David might have a response?
Through you, ma'am, if I can contribute to the conversation, I believe.
Sorry, David, can you just come forward for the benefit of the audio? Sorry.
Oh, jeez. Good afternoon, everyone. Through you, ma'am, I believe. The original language, if you look at it closely, talked about the adoption of a policy, which council never actually adopted, so we hadn't got there. So as the director has put in previously, it's about being able to manage the process going forward. So until we have that regulatory position that we can enforce, it was to determine the best way forward was to encourage. Which may not be satisfactory, but I suppose legislatively, that's where we are.
Anything further?
I might just add that, you know, we've asked for a report on a review of our waste management strategy. And to me, these sorts of conversations should be had through strategies in our waste management strategy as well. I think there will be further opportunity for policy development.
Hmm, yeah. No, all hope is lost. Yeah. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. So I fully support that. I'm pretty confident that it's still law at Hobart City Council. So I think whatever instrument we need, we need to get on to pretty quickly and encourage people to provide FOGO bins if necessary at these events. So I would like to see us perhaps with this report that's coming back, that be a focus of this council. I know when we all came together at the beginning of our term, we were all very keen on seeing sustainability as one of our legacies. And also, you know, looking at best practice in our management of waste. So if that could be considered acting general manager, that would be fantastic with urgency.
I just, it's the, it's often the compliance with the FOGO bins, so the contamination. So you put a FOGO bin in the bin, say that's only the compostable material. Unfortunately, the experience is that that's rarely the case and it gets contaminated, which means the whole lot ends up going away.
With due respect, ma'am, if I could just say, I mean, if other councils are still doing this, it's about changing behaviour and education, not just saying it's too hard.
No, I've had feedback from Hobart Council that that's exactly what's happened when they implemented the requirements. But the FOGO doesn't end up in FOGO, it ends up in landfill because it's contaminated from their events. So I totally agree that that's the way we should be moving, just about being honest about the challenges.
And ma'am, if I give you a cultural example, I went to a festival in Japan, which was down on the waterfront. And it was just a magnificent, you know, fireworks and things like that. But what fascinated me at the end of it were these great big cages appeared from nowhere. And I'm talking massive cages. And all of the people who attended the festival threw their tins and threw their plastic and threw their food waste into different bins. It was a cultural thing that they were not to leave a mess on the beach. And they were educated to actually, so it became a fun competition to make sure that this stuff went in the right bin. And it was fascinating to see.
You won't find a spot of rubbish in Japan.
Okay. Thank you for those questions, Alderman Kendall. Ever so, it was a question I also had. Any further questions? And on that question, I would like us to see, do, to do more work in that space as well. I know it's resource intensive. I saw it at the Wood and Boat Festival. And again, this is an event organisation matter, but they had bin monitors, I'd call them, who were lurking around the bins directing people as to what can go where. As one way to address those challenges that you raised, Luke, around people putting their rubbish in the wrong bins. So obviously that's very resource intensive, but if you are serious about changing behaviour and doing the right thing by the environment, you will invest in those resources or find volunteers who would be keen to be the bin police. A couple of other questions I had, one was around, and David, you may have just alluded to this. The events policy was developed in 2016, I think it is, isn't it? So it's seven years, if that's the case, since it's been reviewed. And I wondered why it hasn't been reviewed since then. And also on a similar, I guess, from a governance perspective, the lease and licensing policy was developed in 2020 and says that it's to be reviewed annually, but now it's only three years later now it's being reviewed. So why wasn't a requirement that it was to be reviewed annually? And why haven't that happened from a governance perspective? How are we checking in on our policy review? And how we put some mechanism in place to ensure we're not, not doing our job properly by missing policy reviews when they're due?
Ma'am, we do actually have a process in place where policies, where their due date pops up. And it's an alert, basically. The lease and licence policy, when it was first developed, I think was put in place for 12 months as a trial to see whether it had to have more reviews and adjustments. I think it just went annually from there. But given that it's fairly mature now, they're suggesting that it actually joins the cycle of all the other policies to be once every four years. And I'm not sure why the events policy has gone seven years. I'd have to check on that. Oh, sorry.
If I may, again, ma'am, what I'm looking at, the bottom of the events, the track changes policy was adopted 29th of June 2020. So it's just gone over two years.
Where did I say 2007 then?
Might have been when the policy was first adopted.
Oh, it was first adopted. Because I thought, no, I remembered that we talked about this. So I was thinking, I thought I was going mad.
Yeah, it was actually that way. The area where we introduced the no use of jumping castles, the policy did come to us, I think it was possibly about 2020 or 2010. I'm not sure when it was. But that's obviously there, the track changes where it was.
We need to pull that terrible amendment through.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, that's right. Yes. Okay. Thank you for that answer. But I guess further to my question around, I'm confident that an alert pops up and policy reviewed you operationally. But it's pretty important for us as elected members, policy and strategy is what we do. So how can we put some mechanism in place where we have a, some sort of quarterly report or something, policy updates that are, well, just like that register, I guess.
Through you, ma'am. They actually go to the order panel, I believe.
So it's on the website. The order panel keeps you ready.
All that registry.
No, the actual policies have a separate sheet in there as well. And it'll be in red, the ones that are overdue, and the one that'll be the greens that are coming up for review. There's a reason why they're overdue, there'll be a note beside it as well. So it's actually in that detail.
So we rely on our order panel as our members, have our check and balance. Yeah, okay. Good. Okay. So that answers that question. I'll get back in my box. The other question I had was why is it, we're removing the light compliant field policy from that lease and licensing policy? I remember, did we receive that policy? Is that why we did, didn't we? Yep. Okay. Just checking. I thought that was the case. And in the subsidy, sorry, the lease and licensing policy talks about. It's 15 and 16. 15 and 16. So to help ensure continued provision of appropriate well maintained facilities, that one. Council generally aim to obtain a market commercial return on commercial use of its properties. However, council recognise some groups receive no or minimal profit, provide particular benefits to the community and takes this into account when determining lease and licensing fees. And though we have a lease and licensing directive that sits under this policy, that's not something we have any oversight over. It's an operational directive. So how can we ensure, I guess, there is a level of consistency around concessions and cost recovery and fairness and equity across user groups when it comes to the rate payer subsidy of facilities?
Yes, we've reviewed the directive at the same time as this, but as you know, it's general manager approval. But I'm more than happy to send that around session if you'd like to, with Alderman. It just gives that next level of detail to how that's done.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
But to answer the question, there is categories of groups, sporting clubs, charity groups, associations. And it does depend on whether they're a commercial entity or just an incorporated sporting group. So there, and there are fees, fee schedules attached to those. So that's how we try and keep it consistent and equitable.
And as leases are renewed, because we have, there are some leases that have been in place for some time. As they're renewed, they're getting updated and the fee amounts are getting up, lease amounts are getting updated to be, have more consistency across.
Yeah, that's right, ma'am. Sometimes we'll give them a couple of years to catch up if it's a significant change from what they're used to. But yeah, that's right.
If necessary, we'll get evaluation on the property. Or we'll review the status of that group, whether that's changed at all or not. And also review whether the facility itself has changed. And then look at what the lease or retain should be.
Great. Thank you. And the only other question I had was, and I guess this will come into our, and it's back to our events policy. Sorry for jumping around. And I think it probably comes into the fees and charges schedule rather than necessarily the event policy. And we do have a specific Toulosa Park usage policy. But I was just interested in having a discussion at some point around use of Toulosa Park and fee schedule for that before we consider our fees and charges. Because it doesn't, I don't think it's really specific to this policy. But I just wondered, just propped that in my mind, reading the policy.
Ma'am, that, yes, that's certainly possible, but it's probably more for next year's budget. Because by the time the Toulosa Park works are completed, that development will still be in progress according to this coming financial year's budget. So definitely it's something that can be discussed, how the park could be used and a fee schedule for things such as concerts and everything, how that can be set up in the schedule.
Yeah. I guess despite those works going on, there have and can still be events held there. And I'm not, I guess, 100% sure there's the right fee structure in place to charge out for those particularly larger scale concerts where promoters make quite a significant amount of money and pay a very minimal fee to council to hire the venue. So. I think there is scope to review that. But that was my, they were my only questions. Otherwise, I'm happy to support the amendments. Any further discussion? Go back to the member Alderman Dunsky to close, babe?
Nothing further, thank you, ma'am.
I'll put the motion. Please raise your hand if you are for. It's carried unanimously. Moving on to item 11, quarterly report, quarter three, 2022-23. Recommendation that council receive a note, council quarterly report and quarterly annual plan progress report for the quarter ending 31st of March 2023. Moved Alderman Cockshot, someone second. Alderman Dunsky or Alderman Cockshot?
Thank you, ma'am. Really pleasing to see in terms of revenue, we're up 2.8% against budget, which is great. That flows down to expenditure as well with 3.4% favorable in terms of the budget. Just would like to highlight the capital works update as well. Obviously, we've mentioned here Gibson's Reserve Playspace commenced last month, which is really exciting for the community as well. And that flows on to the Montrose Bay Fourshore Skate Park as well, that's been commenced, which is great to see. It should be done by June, so I'm looking forward to seeing the end result of that. Obviously, you had the solar panel installation, which will save the council around $25,000. But Adam, this is great, along with the KG5 new septic ditch being laid, designs for the new pavilion being finalised and submitted for a planning application. So lots going on, very good summary of the quarter and good to see we're going well financially.
Thank you, Alderman Cockshot. Any further discussion? I will just add to what Alderman Cockshot said, and I'm really pleased to see the progress on those capital works projects. Some significant movement around Gibson Reserve, Escape Park, Collins Vale Playground, Carn Duff Playspace. A lot of, a lot of work going on across our municipality. So that's really pleasing to see. Also, we had eight community engagement activities across the quarter, which is quite a bit of engagement with the community, with varying levels of response, as we know. But takes, does take resource to be getting out there, talking to the community, asking for their input. And it's really important that we note those engagement activities, the opportunities for people to have their say. Included community, seeking community feedback into our reconciliation action plan and our strategic plan, as well as Benjfield Playspace. There's always a diverse range of topics that we're consulting with our community on. We have 4,200 visitors to our Let's Talk site, the report notes. So I thought that was worth noting as well. The Jobs Fair was also held and was a great success in the last quarter with over 1,700 people attending, connecting with 30 local employers. And I've heard already some stories of people actually getting employment as a result of the Jobs Fair. And that's great. We continue to be on track with our customer service ratings, in fact, exceeding our target and exceeding benchmarks, industry benchmarks, at 85% of customers being satisfied with the service they received during the quarter. Council facilities continue to be well utilised with over 6,600 visitors to the Moona Art Centre, almost 5,000 visitors to the multicultural hub and over 8,000 visits to the Chapel Street Dog Park. So good use of council facilities. I thought it was also worth noting, we have improved our reach through our local city council Facebook page in the last quarter, which was really pleasing through using boost and ads, which is part of our strategy to try and increase our reach and communication with the community. So it's doubled, more than doubled to reaching 67,846 people during that quarter. So that's really a good result. Any further discussion? Councillor Kendall?
I have a question. It wasn't quick enough off the mark.
That's okay.
So, yeah, I have a question about the customer requests and requests currently open categories. And mostly it's roads. I was just going to clarify for people reading this report, which is, yeah, fantastic from you, Emilio. What is the second highest, what is urban services mean?
Urban services, the programme that looks after the cleanliness, if you like, street sweeper, litter pickup. They do paper cleansing once a quarter, ice cream cleaning, that sort of programme. Cleaning of the bus shelters, picking up litter out the front here.
All the stuff we want more of that comes forward.
Yeah.
Graffiti removal, those sort of tasks fitting the urban services. All the stuff we should need less of, if we did the right thing.
Yeah.
Great. I just thought for people reading to understand what that second highest category is. And also just feeling the community pain around the BMX relocation, which I know, you know, is out there. And I acknowledge, you know, that we've got the skate park coming online, which is fantastic. My question was around the Toulosa Street Park master plan, which has the potential mountain biking track in it. And is there scope? Yeah, what's the, what's the scope for that happening? I guess is my question.
So the Toulosa Park master plan is separate from the mountain bike master plan. So that's one part that's being developed. Once the old dam is reintegrated with the park, it'll create more parkland to be used for recreating events and all sorts of things. And then that will require further development as time goes on because the stage one of the implementation with has water is just filling, levelling and filling the dam and putting it back to grass. And there will be a series of ponds and that sort of thing. The mountain bike master plan is a bit further up Toulosa Street and there is a prospectus for a potential hub and trailhead, if you like, where it all comes together. Now, we're actually investing, I think it's close to $400,000 in reinstating, repairing, upgrading some of the tracks in that area that have, you know, that just fallen into a bad state of repair over time. So that'll give up to a good, safe, usable standard. But I guess there's opportunity, and this is what the prospectus is about, for private enterprise to get involved in developing the hub and making it a commercial project that they can provide the mountain bike facility as a user pay service. And people that use it and pay will make the operator sustainable. And that operator can then reinvest into the clubhouse, maybe a cafe, small tracks. So the idea is for private investment to get involved in developing it so that the community, the rate payer, doesn't have to pour money into it itself. developing it so that the community, the rate payer, doesn't have to pour money into it itself.
So there is a current mountain bike park there, it was established in two thousand and nine? Yes, I, I nine ten, yes. So it's been there for some time, but we've not invested a lot in the upgrade, in any upgrades or renewal of that facility over that time.
Through your men, a lot of the work was done by volunteers and the mountain bike riders, and there was a club that were involved. But that's disbanded and there's not, not much attention being given to the tracks over time, so hence the reason we're investing some grant funding, actually, you know, community infrastructure, local roads, funding into the upgrade of the tracks to get them up to a good standard.
Yeah, and I'll just add to your question further in relation to the BMX track relocation. The BMX club itself is southern, is southern city BMX, it's a regional BMX facility, so it's never whilst it was based in Glanock, it was never a local community club, there's young people from all over like southern has, used that as the regional BMX facility, it had about a hundred and, or has, I think about a hundred and twenty members, last time I knew, it was around a hundred and twenty members, and they weren't all from the Glanock community, and the club members, majority of the club members are pleased or are satisfied with the move to Surrell because it means they can have a national scale BMX track that will be far superior to anything that we could have done here, given the size of the land that they held here. So we did explore far and wide across the municipality for a site to relocate the club to here that could meet those needs within our budget and we couldn't find anything suitable, so it has been a good outcome and it's been one that's been accepted by the majority of users.
I'll just add to that, Mayor, I spoke to the president of the club and he's extremely happy with what's happening for them, so they see it as a step forward, not a step backwards.
Great background. Yeah, and it's a good, ultimately, a much better return for rate payers in terms of value of that land returned to the rate payer. Did you find that?
Can you actually just kind of add that there is still interest from the club and local volunteers in being able to get a mountain bike park and helping look after the trails, but I think it's the acting general manager alluded to, the condition of the trails at the moment is pretty poor, it's been a long time without any sort of professional maintenance on them, so this grant programme is going to renew every single existing trail that's up there and we're re-engaging with those individuals in the club to set up a key group to help look after them once they're brought up to speed and it's a little bit more manageable, it's not all that realistic to say expect to do such a bulk amount of work now. And your other comment around BMX track in Tlosa, and it's just something else that could be done there. There is, there's overlap between the Tlosa master plan and the mountain bike master plan, and the idea of a pump track has also been in those plans at Tlosa Park, which I think would be a much more suitable facility for something like Tlosa Park. Obviously, a BMX track's a fenced off facility that's only for the, the, the members of that public race. Pump tracks, the public open facility, which everyone can jump on and have fun on, just like the skate park, so I think into the future, that, that is the master plan, which can be used by BMX riders.
Great, just a second question, infrastructure wise, we could put the pump track in where we couldn't put the BMX track in?
Yes, I believe so, we'd still have to double check on the geotechnical, because that was the issue with the BMX track, but it was largely to do with the size of the start hill and the infrastructure that went with that, that was prohibitive for, it could cause sentiment that's in that area. I believe a pump track would probably be spread out enough that the, you could, but that would be something with that, given the chance we have with BMX track.
That's it, thank you, thanks for that response.
Thank you, any further discussion or questions? Alderman's name?
Mayor, just in relation to parking infringements issued, do we ever get a feedback of just how many of those are actually paid or what's outstanding? This is, this is good information, but I'd like to start knowing how much is outstanding.
Yeah, we can take that on notice.
You'll have to take that on notice.
Unless Alan's got a, sorry, throw away our manager finance unless he's come off the top of his head to respond.
I don't have, through you here, I don't have the dollar pick up in front of me. However, since council considered a few years ago, the why we collect parking infringements and ensued a digital process until twenty twenty, certainly improved our collections. And the amount, from memory, is about five hundred thousand dollars owing at the moment. Most of it, which is the M-Pes to be collected.
And?
Once it goes to M-Pes, it's out of our control, we have no more say in the collection of that.
What's that like compared to previous years?
Substantially now.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Good answer to the question in relation to, through your men, is that then added to our books, is it added as an asset or do we just treat it as a, how do we treat that?
We treat the parking infringement as revenue when paid.
When paid, so not the right.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I had on finance, so it was excellent to hear that. Mayor, I just want to, this is operational matter, but it's also, we used to have an old committee here about thirty years ago that used to be environmental one, and like food premises, inspecting whatever. I mean, it's really good to see how good we are at that, but I'd like to see just a breakdown on just, you know, which areas doing well, which areas perhaps not doing as well, so no words, you know, is our takeaways versus, you know, you, whatever, those sort of things, can that be given to Alderman? Because we used to get it, there used to be a national committee who used to get that information.
As in compliance?
Yeah, yeah, compliance, yeah.
Compliance performance by by type of business.
By type, by type of activity, not the name of the place or anything like that, just the, the type of activity and whether or not it was high in, in relation to good or bad compliance, that's all.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the question, would it be adequate if it was part of our annual plan reporting?
Yeah, that's all right, it's just, it's just, I just think it's good information, I often get asked these questions and I said, of course, we have very good inspectors in the, in the city and whatever, but they see, like a question was asked about, asked me about, there's some shopkeepers who have different views on the food vans in our city. And my own personal opinion is that I think the food vans give some colour to the city in particular at night time than if they're in other areas away from other existing shops. The first thing that hit me, of course, was are they inspected and all these sort of things? And of course, I said, well, were they by one vision, they would be inspected, but that's not, that's, I think it's because it would have, it would be a load of information that can help the ongoing, the manager has the same, same, same stuff as well at times. So I don't think it's an operational, I think it's more, more one of information for everybody, actually.
When we, when we discuss our annual plan and part of that will be our measures and our reporting, so that will be something to raise that we can carry on that conversation through that process, definitely, yeah. Any further questions? Thank you, Alan. I'll go back to the member, who was Alderman Cockshot.
Thank you, Mayor, really good to see lots of positive discussion and things happening in the community. The one thing I forgot to mention was there was obviously a preliminary concept planning for Benjfield Park, Park and Play Space in Moonar, which is another exciting element of our playground renewal project, so that's all I had.
Great, thank you, I'll put the motion to vote, please raise your hand if you are for, carried unanimously. Moving on to item twelve, notice, motion, question on notice or without notice? We had a question on notice from the last meeting from Alderman Yaxley in relation to the Glanock Community Fund's basis of twenty fourteen application. The answer is included there in the agenda. Any further questions for Yaxley?
No, this does, thank you.
Can we have any other questions without notice this evening? Alderman's name?
Mayor, I just, I raised it a little while back, it's just in relation to keeping track, we have a lot of fantastic people in this community, men and women, who've done wonderful things. And unfortunately, they die, and we all know several ones, but I know some incredible ones in the last couple of months who've died and they may not even be a citizens of the year, they may not have received Australian honour, but crikey, they've done fifty or sixty years' worth of service to this community, so I just like somewhere where we can have, just have perhaps somewhere on one of our council meeting, I suppose, agendas, Mayor, where we can just make a note of these, of those sort of individuals and the contribution that they've made, I just think sometimes I call them the the quiet soldiers, but they do an incredible amount of work and there's just a number of them that have come through now because they're in a particular age bracket, so I'll just raise that up.
Thank you, Alderman. I would suggest there is the item, these announcements by the chair.
Sure.
So I'm certainly happy if elected members want to pass on any announcements that they have, that they would like me to make, or if they feel very strongly about making an announcement itself in that particular section, then I'm happy to consider that on request as well, so absolutely, we can use that mechanism for that purpose. I agree, it is, it is definitely worth it. Any further questions? Councillor Kendall?
Yeah, just to clarify, looking back to the beginning of the meeting, for the people that attended, hopefully this message will go back to them, for clarity around what space they should watch in terms of their opportunity to make a representation if any future application comes to us or rezoning question. Where should they go to be alerted?
So everyone who has made a representation, if you call it that, or anyone who has emailed any of us or council so far on this matter, we're keeping a record of their details and we're going to advise them. That's not required under the legislation, but we have committed to doing that, given the significant community interest. So anyone who has already contacted us will most definitely be alerted and I think it's quite a group gathering who will keep each other informed when that opportunity arises as well. Development applications are also advertised, so there will be advertising in the paper, in the Mercury, we do also post on our social media when development applications are out for public representations to be made. And adjoining landowners will receive a letter.
And our website, please.
And through our website, we do promote current applications, as well as the notice board down in council papers, so. Other than door knocking, we do as much as we can to keep people informed.
Mayor, when, when the ads ready to go out, we'll also email all Alderman link and know that it's about to be advertised as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Or I will ask that someone who's going to close at five thirty five. Alderman Cockshot and Alderman King seconded, please raise your hand if you are for. That is carried unanimously, so open meeting concludes at five thirty five PM, thank you to members of the public who have joined us and stayed the journey this afternoon. We appreciate your interest and we will see you at the end of next month, hopefully. Thank you, members of the public who have joined us online as well, stay well and good night.